Wait along. You're alive.
I think I forgot everything. Okay. So. So let's call the September 3rd course, special city council. I think it's a regular city council meeting to order. Yes. Roll call, please.
Mayor, would you like the Pledge of Allegiance? Would you like to conduct the Pledge of Allegiance first?
Oh, okay. Do we do, yeah. So we do the Pledge of Allegiance first. Yeah. Thank you.
Councilmember Fruin?
Here.
Councilmember Mohan?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here and in person.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Here.
Mayor Chow?
Here. So first of all, during, we took a break in August. During the break, the community hall was under construction. And we have made some audio video equipment updates. All the council dials, we have new buttons. So we are all getting used to the new gadget we have available. But so bear with us if some, we are still trying to figure some things out. Like, I'd like to thank the staff who have really worked over time. They have torn apart almost all the wires in the community hall and put them back together. So that now they have, they have the ability to control the cameras in a, in a control room. So thank the staff for making this all happen within such a short time. And another matter is we are very sad to hear the passing of former Mayor Hanhui. This happened last week. And she has made, touched a lot of lives. I think we all remember her wonderful smile and her many social media posts everywhere she goes. And just very sad to learn that after one year fighting with cancer, she left us. I think we learned, many people have asked, there will be a service tomorrow at 12:30 to 2:00. She, so if, I'm not sure, the service is open to public, but I'm not sure if we are at the liberty to disclose the location. So if you would like to attend the service, please reach out to someone, maybe the Rotary, to find out the location. And she, her family members let everyone know that they would like you to all dress in bright colors to celebrate her life. And just like how she has brightened up all of our lives. Thank you. And then to, at the end of this meeting, we will adjourn in memory of former Mayor Hanhui. Next. Do we have a closed session report?
The council met in closed session and discussed the item on the agenda and no reportable action was taken. Thank you.
Okay. Next, item four. It's recognition of September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. We, we, we have our recognition for the childhood, for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. I'd like to honor the organizations that have been serving children and the family who are affected by childhood cancer. We have proclamation to recognize Jacob Hart Children's Cancer Support Services. They have been a lifeline for families in our community, offering care, support, and compassion during the most difficult times. And their work is deeply appreciated. We also recognize Neve Carlton and the brave Romeo Foundation, whose dedication to raising awareness and helping others in both inspiring, is both inspiring and admirable. These proclamations are a small gesture of our appreciation for all of the work that you have done and the lives that you have touched. Thank you for all that you do. And the recipients will receive the proclamation by mail. Next, item five, we have, we recognize September as the National Preparedness Month. For this one, we have a presenter from Cadre, which is collaborating agencies disasters relief effort. So, yeah, I'll, and we have, also the, oh, so Marshall Hovey is Executive Director of Cadre. Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor Chow and members of the council, I thank you for this opportunity to be here today and to receive your proclamation on behalf of all those that are preparing the community for disasters. We know that local government has a very big job trying to prepare its staff and coordinate with all of the other cities for their, their portion of disaster response. Cadre fills the other void, which is coordinating the community organizations. So we have two initiatives right now for Preparedness Month that involve Cupertino. They're countywide, but each, we're encouraging each city to be, we're encouraging organizations from each city to convene within the cities and will do that, but then also that they are part of a greater group. So we're creating community support networks. They are profession-specific in areas like children, mass care, advocacy, never remember them all, business and economics, veterans. And that's all I can think of right now, but our website, which is cadresv.org, has a list of all of them. And so the purpose of these meetings is not to take away from anyone else's work, but to actually create a plugin that's related to disaster preparedness because we, that's our job, is to worry about every organization being prepared. So we want people to come to the table to share, to share their, their brains, essentially. There is no homework. They come to the meeting, they network with those that are in the same profession around the county. We pick their brains about what, what common issues related to preparedness might be, and then we'll go back and try to do the research to solve them. So the idea is that we'll become more resilient over time. In conjunction with that, the reason that we're creating these 20 networks at this time is that we just received a grant from AmeriCorps to recruit 1,000 volunteers over the age of 55. Now, I used to be the emergency manager for Cupertino for 10 years. And I know the power of volunteers because you did, and I know you still have an amazing group of volunteers that truly make a difference because they live here, they care about what's going on, and they don't, a lot of them don't have day jobs anymore. So it's, it's great. And so we're, I'm calling on them as well as everyone that they know to come in and to offer at least one hour of service for Cadre to better the entire county and build that resilience. And I do, if I have one more minute, can I invite my colleague, Antonia Bradford, up? She is our new volunteer engagement coordinator to talk a little bit more about how to get involved with that program.
Hi, I'm so happy to be here. I'm actually, I was raised in Cupertino. I just attended my 30th high school reunion from Cupertino High, so go pioneers. So I'm the volunteer engagement coordinator. And basically, my job is to connect with 1,000 volunteers across Santa Clara County that are 55 and older. And really what that is, is we're tapping into a ridiculously unused resource, which is knowledge and wisdom that comes with age. So the CSN meetings, they are organizations that come in, people that are within the wheelhouse of veterans, unhoused, or one of the other 20, oh, sorry. One of the other 20 CSNs. But we want people that are 55 and older to also come to the table because all of that collaboration makes community stronger. And so we want their wisdom, we want their professional expertise, we want them to be a part of the conversation. And so that's what I'm doing, is connecting across the county with people that fit within those demographics so that we can bring them into the table, to the conversation, and have them be part of the solution. Oh, yes, thank you. You can email if you want to be involved at volunteer@cadresv.org. You can visit our website to contact us through there as well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I'd like to also mention that Vice Mayor, thanks to Vice Mayor, I learned about Cadre. And I think no matter how the city tried to reach out, we cannot reach out to everyone. So we do rely on community organizations to help us get the community prepared. So thank you, Cadre, for filling in that void. And also because of Vice Mayor, we signed up for the third training in August. And in October, there will be a third training happening right here in Cupertino. So I'd like to encourage everyone to sign up. You learn how to get yourself, your family prepared first, and then learn how to help your community to be prepared. So, yeah. So thank you for encouraging many seniors to also get involved. So let's have a presenter proclamation. Could you come up? Next, we have a presentation from our Cupertino Sister City Student delegation. Thank you.
Yes, video, would you please cue the presentation slides?
Good evening, Mayor Chow, council members and staff.
The mic is not on. Is it?
Video, can you also tune the lectern microphone, please?
Hello, testing. Testing.
It's kind of there, but then not loud enough.
Testing, testing?
Yeah.
Is that better if I just like eat it like an ice cream cone? Okay. I'll, I'll try this again. Good evening, Mayor Chow, council members and staff. My name is Helene Davis, and I am the President of the Cupertino Cupertino Sister Cities Association. And the slides are being queued, but while they're being queued, I will say, unfortunately, the students and the chaperone could not be here this evening because it's the start of a new school year, and the students have dispersed to other campuses now. So in the future, I would just request that it would be great if the presentation could be scheduled in May, right after the exchange happens. That typically happens in April. I'm sure you'd rather hear from the students than from me. They, they have a completely unique perspective and experience, and I don't. So we are the oldest sister city relationship. Our MOU was signed in 1963 by our respective mayors. And we did start our student exchange in 2016. We skipped a few years because of the pandemic, of course, and restarted our exchange in 2024. So if I had a visual, I could show you that Cupertino is in the Puglia region of Italy. It's in the heel of the boot. There it is. There's a map for you. It is nestled between the Ionian and Adriatic Seas. And we do have a unique bond with this sister city because we are named after their patron saint, Saint Joseph of Cupertino. Slide two. This year, we sent six students and one chaperone, Dawn MacLeod, from Saint Joseph of Cupertino School to Cupertino, Italy. And our students traveled to Rome either before or after the visit to Cupertino. This year, they went before, and it was special for them because it was a jubilee year in Rome, and that only happens every 25 years. And there are a lot of extra activities and people and madness and mayhem and all that. But they typically stay in a convent or a monastery. This year, they stayed in a convent. And if you can believe it, that picture on the left is the view from where they were staying. It was just amazing. Okay, so next slide. So they attend school in Cupertino, and they have a chance to tour the town, meet with the locals, get to know their families. They explore the coast and the countryside. Next slide. So here they are in Cupertino. There's a Norman-era castle. They're inside there. They're in the town of Cupertino, and then they're exploring the countryside. It's called Alberobello, this little town that they're visiting there. Next slide. So it is a reciprocal exchange. So we hosted seven students and one chaperone here in Cupertino. The chaperone was Valentina de Paulus, and they attended school here. They toured the Google and Apple Visitor Center, of course, visited Cupertino City Hall. Thank you, Mayor Chow, for welcoming them. They really enjoyed it. They sat right where you're sitting, and we got some great photos of that. They really enjoyed that. Of course, they took field trips to San Francisco and Santa Cruz. And I think one of the big highlights for them was Great America because they don't have something like that with all the rides and then a huge firework display at the end. So it was really a jam-packed itinerary. Next slide. And then we had an actual unofficial adult delegation visit to Cupertino in June. We wanted to meet the new mayor, and that's the new mayor there on the left. His name's Vincenzo Di Giorgi? Giorgi? Pronouncing it right. It's always good to meet face-to-face with the people that you deal with, you know, halfway across the world. So we also had nine travelers from Cupertino and two Italian travelers who used to live in Cupertino that joined us. So it was really fun. So that's the end of my presentation. And I want to thank the city for your support of all of our sister cities. We look forward to next year's exchange and hope to have the students present to you sometime next May. Thank you. Oh, one last thing. I have a present from, it's not an official present, it's, I'm going to give it to Deputy City Manager Tina Kapoor. And then you can decide what you want to do with it, display it out in City Hall or what have you.
Okay. Thank you for all your effort to keep the longest-running Sister City Association going and then recover after COVID. And it's really great to see that this is happening again. And in fact, I happened to run into a group of doctors from Cupertino right in the city hall when, and I was, I was, oh, I was taking the CPR training at that time. So by luck, they visited the city hall. And it's, it was amazing. Yeah. Thank you. So I, that's, please work with the staff to make the arrangement for next year. Yeah. So next, item seven, we have under postponement. We would postpone, hmm, I think, yeah, we are still getting used to the speaker. It seems more sensitive than before. So we are postponing an appeal to the likely November 18th city council meeting. So may I have a motion? Do we want to set the specific date? Or I think maybe let's have a motion to postpone the appeal for a business license renewal fee to a meeting in November 18th or after. This, because the city staff is working on a proposal that would be applicable for all businesses who might need to renew their business license. Yeah.
Mayor, just to note that we have confirmed the hearing date with the appellant, but we can certainly work with the appellant to change it to a different date.
Oh, okay. Oh, yo, do you need to announce, you need to announce the date, publish the date?
Yes, we will notice the public hearing date in the, in the newspaper and.
Okay. So then we should postpone to November 18th, and in case necessary, we can postpone.
There is, there is plenty of time to notice, but just, just to let you know that, that we did coordinate with the appellant, so if, but if council wishes, I'm sure they'll, they're willing to push it out to a later date.
Okay.
More so moved?
Mayor, I think the date uncertain is okay, and then we can confirm with.
So postpone to a date uncertain. Yeah.
So I'll withdraw my first motion and so moved. Thank you.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Let's vote, I think. Okay, so we will use our panel to vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
So did the vote display on the screen?
Yes, it is.
So that's a new feature, we can see the vote. Okay. Next, we have oral communications. City Clerk?
Yes. Yes, thank you. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the council and not on the agenda for discussion. The total time for oral communications will ordinarily be limited to one hour. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes. As necessary, the chair may further limit the time allowed to individual speakers or reschedule remaining comments to the end of the meeting on a first-come, first-heard basis, with priority given to students. In most cases, state law will prohibit the council from discussing or making decisions with respect to a matter not listed on the agenda. A council member may, however, briefly respond to statements made or questions posed by speakers. A council member may also ask a question for clarification, provide a reference for factual information, request staff to report back concerning a matter, or request that an item be added to a future city council agenda in response to public comment. Anyone wishing to provide comments on this item, please have your request to speak submitted in the next nine minutes. And Mayor, I currently have six requests to speak in community hall, and I see three requests to speak virtually, which would bring us to 27 minutes approximately.
Yeah, I think that's okay.
Okay. Okay, we will begin with Rajiv, I believe that is Rajiv, followed by no name but regarding Mary Avenue Villas, followed by Jennifer Griffin. Is there a Ronjov perhaps regarding Mary Avenue Project? Yes. You may approach the lectern. Thank you.
Hello? Is it okay? Can you hear me?
Yes, if you speak directly in to the microphone, it should.
Hello?
Yeah. It takes a minute. Yes.
Hi. So I've come here many times. I've approached the council members, and I've talked about the Mary Avenue Villas many times here. And then still, I feel, we also met a couple of council members and also city staff to, to talk about our grievances about the Mary Avenue Villas. Looks like they are not being heard or they're not being taken care of properly is what we feel. I may be wrong. I'd like to invite the other council members also, who have, who we have not met, if we can have a personal, private conversation with the residents around here. I really appreciate if you'd understand the problems that we are facing there with the new Mary Avenue Villas. I'll be approaching the other members who have not, who we have not yet met. That's one thing. And then there's actually a couple of things which we talked about. It's a gridlock system there with a lot of apartments and houses. And only out from there to the, near the nearest freeway is from the Mary Avenue. It's actually a very narrow road right now, and it's very crowded. And I'm not sure if there are only 12 festivals allowed there in the Memorial Park, but there might be many, you know, that we, we as Asian community have festivals all around the year, especially the Indian community can, if you look at that, we have like hundreds of festivals. I think people who are aware of the Indian religious thing would be aware of that. I'm not sure if there's any limits to that. And every time the festivals happen in the Memorial Park, it's all like crowded there. And just imagine if some emergency happens here, like earthquake or something there, and there's the only exit out of the freeway, the nearest one, for about hundreds of houses around the, that place is Mary Avenue. And that's kind of, I'm not sure how it will happen if you have like another 40 houses. And so that's, that's one of the main concerns that we have. And then I'm not sure if that's been taken into account. The, the other exits that we have is already, you know, outside to stelling, but then the nearest one to the freeway is only Mary Avenue. I think instead of increasing the Mary Avenue to two lanes to address the problems in the future, we are aimed at decreasing the Mary Avenue right now and increasing the space with having a lot of other people there. And actually, this is only 20, I think, of intellectually developed ideal people there that's going to be supposed to be. We are not against the project itself, but then the location is not the right one. And I've come here and talked to, in front of council members many times about this, and I'm not sure what's happening here.
Thank you. That is your time?
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have a request to speak regarding Mary Avenue Villas. However, I do not have a name. Then I will read the rest of the requests. If your name is not included in that, then I'm, I'm calling you to speak now. Jennifer Griffin, Joe Hauser, Brian Avery, Lutheran Williams, and Jean Bedord. So if your name was not included in that list, I will move you to the end of the queue and try again. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening. Can you, can you guys hear me? Okay, so what are we doing?
It just takes a moment to tune.
Okay. Sorry, I'm not sure what.
We can hear you.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you start that back again? Because I really feel uncomfortable that nobody can hear me. The last speaker was up and down, and I couldn't understand the first half of his message until the second half, when the volume went up.
Okay, are you ready?
Yes. Make a sign if you can understand me.
We can hear you. We can hear you.
Oh, we've had twenty years in here and this is interesting. Okay, hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin. I'm scared to move because I am assuming that you can hear me now. I wanted to talk tonight about SB seventy-nine, which is a proposed new housing bill from Senator Weiner. This bill is currently supposed to go to the floor of the assembly for a vote and then it will go back to the senate for another floor vote. My home is within one-half mile of Stevens Creek Boulevard, which means that if this bill passes, people can build eight-story high rises anywhere one-half mile from Stevens Creek Boulevard. It is frightening. I will tell you that this is, this bill has completely changed who I am voting for for president, governor, assembly, senate, and who I support in the future. The mayor of Los Angeles has, the whole city council of LA was against this bill unless they, unless they eliminate, they will take out cities that have valid housing elements. Now, I, I think that is a smart move because Cupertino spent two to three years to get a valid housing element. We, we got that last summer. It was not fun, it cost a lot of money, and to me, it was a great waste of time. If we have a bill like SB seventy-nine coming out of the legislature from a senator that is not directly involved with Santa Clara County, that is going to be overriding our housing element, we have massive problems in the California legislature. I have, there is a new group called Abundance Network. No one explained what they were, they just appeared on the scene. And I can tell you, there are some big power players in it. The ex-mayor of Oakland, other former elected mayors, and we want to know what they're doing, where their money is coming from. This group is being funded, it's an astroturf group, and what they're doing is they're training other elected officials across this country to put in missing middle. They have apparently merged with Yimby, the governor, Scott Weiner, Buffy Wicks, everyone has embraced it. It is frightening. I, I will tell you that I have never been so on guard and nervous about the president, the governor, and politics. The only people we have are our local city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Joe Hauser, followed by Brian Avery, followed by Lutheran Williams. Welcome, Joe.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Mayor Chow and city council members and staff, my name is Joe Hauser. I am a fifty-year resident of Cupertino. I have deep concerns regarding the safety of occupants and of the neighborhood problems that would result if the proposed construction of housing... of housing for challenged individuals on Mary Avenue is approved. The site is probably the densest and therefore the most dangerous area in the city for challenged individuals. If the proposed housing is built, the residents will have a very difficult time crossing Mary Avenue. The only pedestrian crossings are at Lubek Street and near Memorial Park, and that is a distance of close to half a mile. The nearest retail is on the other side of Memorial Park. Since some of these challenged individuals will need walkers, canes, or wheelchairs, it presents a safety issue for all these people. Besides dodging cars, there are also bicycles and individuals on motorized bikes and skateboards. Even the city vehicles from the city yard will present problems. Furthermore, during the major activities of Memorial Park, parking and large crowds will cause difficult situations for all. The needed area that I'm talking about includes Memorial Park, the senior center, bicycle lanes, the Mary Avenue Bridge, the Deans College main entrance, the Mary Avenue Dog Park, the Cupertino City Yard, Stevens Creek entrance to the two-eighty-eight-five freeway as storage facility near the Cupertino termination of Mary Avenue, new condos that are now built on the Oak site, and existing homes, condos, and apartments. Mary Avenue is the only major, main artery to accommodate these residents. The act, the alternative construct consists of two residential streets that empty into Stelling Road. This presents a major problem during the morning and evening rush hour since the only street that has a traffic light into Stelling is an S-shaped narrow road that goes by Garden Gate Elementary School. During the morning and mid-afternoon commute, access to this street is almost impossible in that parents bring their children to school, they park along the narrow street or block the street entirely. The other street endings has a stop sign to Stelling Road. During the rush hour commute, it is almost impossible at times to get onto Stelling Road. Many residents therefore use Mary Avenue instead. Also, since most residents use the freeway, Mary Avenue is the only logical choice. Consider the problems if there were an emergency during rush hour. In addition to the problems outlined above, pollution and noise from the adjacent freeway can be very detrimental to the already compromised individuals. As a resident, I have seen several accidents and close calls in the area, especially during Memorial Park events. I personally have...
Thank you, that is your time. Next, we have Brian Avery, followed by Lutheran Williams, followed by Jean Bedord. Welcome, Brian.
Hi, I'm Brian Avery. Thanks to the council and staff for everything they do for Cupertino. Our family company operates in twelve cities and I always say that Cupertino is our favorite because of the dedication to education that I've seen over the forty-seven years that I've worked in my job. And it's relentless and it's, it's fun to see and I tell any other city that. We designed, built, and maintained the Glenbrook property on Cupertino, on Mary Avenue, with our own crews from maintenance to paint to plumbing and et cetera, et cetera. So for forty-seven years, I've worked seven days a week and I'm at Glenbrook four days a week walking on Mary Avenue, perhaps more than most people in this room. And if I were to, I mean, if you can trust me, my engineering background and knowing the entire street, I know how many of the, of the corp yard trucks from Cupertino are going one way, I know how many bike riders are going the other. I know about the festivals, festivals are growing. I have to pay for security when there are festivals. I never complained to this city because I think the festivals and the parks are wonderful. If I were to, if I were to, to just say one thing, if you could trust me, it's that putting, putting a building in the street like this directly across from our driveway, we have eleven hundred residents, two driveways, so directly across, is, is making a situation worse. That's already getting worse. You know it's getting, you know you would be making it worse by taking away eighty-nine parking stalls. I've never seen that in my career. But how can I prove that it's already getting worse? We had our first person resident hit by people coming out of Westport. And we are now, once a week, having confrontations with the under-parked Westport development, which is only fifty percent developed. The, the, there's hardly any guest parking for over there, so they're parking in our property because it looks safe. And that'll continue. So you take away ninety stalls, you're obviously gonna force us to try to gate the community. And, and so the festivals are getting bigger and the Westport development, when it's done, is gonna really have an impact. So that's the only thing I would leave you with is making a situation worse when it's already getting worse. Might, might cause a reason for some pause to look at some of the factors. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Next, we have Lutheran Williams, followed by Jean Bedord, followed by a quester that did not leave their name, but the topic is Mary Avenue Villas. Welcome, Lutheran.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. My name is Lutheran Williams and I'm the head of Tessellations School. Tessellations is honored to be a part of Cupertino. We are only one of two schools in the Bay Area dedicated to gifted asynchronous learners, students who often struggle to fit in traditional classrooms and thrive, yet have incredible potential to give back to the world in significant ways. Because of their academic, social, emotional, and intellectual needs, they require modifications in education, teaching, and parenting. We provide special education that is largely not addressed by public or private schools. Cupertino is a city known for the quality of the education, innovation, and excellence, and we believe it is fitting that Tessellations has its home here. Our presence brings to Cupertino many community benefits. Strengthening public education. By renting from the Cupertino Union School District, we contribute over three million dollars each year to the district. That is money that directly strengthens local public schools. Two, supporting local businesses. Our families and staff shop in Cupertino, dine in Cupertino, and invest in Cupertino every single day. Some of our families have even moved to Cupertino for the school. Three, we increase the neighborhood and real estate value. By keeping our campus vibrant and active, we've invested over a million dollars in this property. We not only prevent the decline that often comes with a vacant site, but also add value to the neighborhood as a whole. We want you to know that we hear our neighbors' concerns about traffic and safety matters and we have put in place measures to help. Staggered drop-offs and pickups, carpooling programs, and onsite directing traffic to keep it safe. On June third, we welcomed thirty-three neighbors to our school to share information and explore a path forward. While the meeting was productive and a neighborhood partnership committee was formed, including Tessellations' parents who lived in the community, neighbors, and administrators, the committee has stalled as some volunteer neighbor, or some volunteer neighbors appeared to have been dissuaded from participating. Despite our efforts in sharing details about our small high school program, misinformation has been presented to the planning commission about our five students in grades nine and ten. Even with the clear timeline in our CUP application to move the program off this campus by 2029-30 and by adding a no-driving clause in our contracts, these students who just want to learn alongside their friends and their community have been made to feel unwelcome. Being told by, they cannot return has devastated them.
Thank you, that is your time. Next, we have Jean Bedord. And then we will move to those requesting to speak virtually. Welcome, Jean.
Good eve, good, good evening. Is this the right height? Can you hear me?
You can adjust it, you can adjust it.
Does this work?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, and council members Fruan, Mohan, Wong, and staff. Welcome back. I hope you had a chance to relax. My name is Jean Bedord and I'm a longtime Cupertino resident. Tonight, I will, I want you to address an overlooked aspect of senior housing. There are many parents in our community who have intellectually and developmentally disabled or ADD children living with them. These parents probably moved to Cupertino because our school districts have excellent programs for these children. But what happens when ADD children grow up and age out of the school system? Most continue to work at home, to live at home, but they, along with their parents, age. There are seventy and eighty-year-old parents providing caregiving for the, for their dependent adult children. Their parents are stuck in their family homes and unable to move to senior communities which better suit their needs. Their dependent children can't move with them. So where do these children go? Let's talk about Michael, who was educated and grew up in Cupertino and lived in my neighborhood. He was a forty-year-old with a twelve-year-old mental age. Michael walked the neighborhood and everyone knew him. He went to all the Little League games and was a very enthusiastic fan. He did fundraising for the Heart Association and other charities. He enjoyed life. But then his mother died. He and his dad muddled along. Then his father died. Michael couldn't live alone, so his sister had to find a place for him to go. There was nothing here in Cupertino, so eventually, an opening was found for him in the Sierra foothills. While he is not homeless, he lost his home, his friends, and entire community, everything that was meaningful in his life. The city made a commitment years ago to facilitating this type of housing represented by the Mary Avenue Villas. It has taken too many years to get this approval, this project approved. I am here to urge you to expedite the final steps so it doesn't get bogged down in yet another, in even more delays and higher construction costs. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Jean. And I will give one last call for the person who requested to speak but did not leave their name on the topic of Mary Villas. Okay, welcome.
Hi, thank you. I'm a resident homeowner at Costadanza, right next door to the proposed forty-unit complex. My big concern is the parking and I noticed on the August twenty-fifth meeting, I believe it was Brian of Glenbrook, was saying that they're getting more and more people in from Westport and other places events. We have at Costadanza, we have an overflow parking lot. We're already getting people going in there parking. It's ours, it's for our residents. We're starting to get invaded and I cannot believe that you think you can put Westport in without adequate parking, then you can take eighty-nine use spaces, parking spaces on Mary Avenue that are used, and then you're gonna put in forty more units with, I think, net, you're gonna add twenty-two parking spaces. Do you really even think that's enough? They're gonna start coming into our community, Costadanza. We're, we already have problems. We probably spent three hundred dollars a month removing trash from the dumpster areas that probably half of it's put there by outside forces. So I, I can't believe that you wanna take a roadway and call it a parcel and build a forty-unit, a nice complex, but let's face it, it's kind of a feel-good thing. It's not an appropriate location. You're taking away probably over net a hundred parking spaces. They're gonna come into Costadanza. Why should your project make our lives a little more miserable? I, I, I just don't understand it, that you can't in this big city find some other more appropriate place. So, thank you.
Thank you. And now we will move to those requesting to speak virtually. We have Nori, followed by Lena, followed by Connie Cunningham.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, please help Jody. Bicycle is considered a vehicle as it is a machine used to transport people and is subject to same traffic law as a motor vehicle under the California law. For the reason, riding a bicycle on the sidewalk is prohibited because unsafe for both cyclists and pedestrians. City Memorial Park's specific plan says, since the park does not feature any designated bicycle trails, bicycle riding in the park discouraged due to the potential conflict with pedestrians. Pedestrians were injured by bicycle in Memorial Park. I know people who were injured by bicycles. A woman was taken to hospital. I was almost hit by bicycle a few times. There are many family with small children, seniors... There are many family with small children, seniors, senior who use walker or cane, and the people with baby stroller in the park. Those people cannot move quickly when the bicycle has fast. Building a bicycle rack in front of the gazebo in the middle of the park encourages more people to ride the bicycle anywhere in the park, even near playground. Park is no longer safe place for the people and the children who are walking, jogging, and playing. The bicycle rack should be placed in the Memorial Park parking lot behind the Green Down Center or behind the pickleball court bleachers. Because bicycle is considered at the vehicle, cyclists and pedestrian cannot share the narrow walkway in the park. Undercity built a bike lane just like the street to protect pedestrians. Otherwise, in my court, more injuries. Small children riding a tricycle or a small bicycle are exception because their parents are always watching. There are many cycling trails in Cupertino or near Cupertino area. Mary Avenue Bridge over 280, Rancho San Antonio, Uthel Boulevard, Stevens Creek, Canyon Road, Linda Vista Trail, and many more. Please consider pedestrians safely first. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Nori. And next, we have Lena. Welcome, Lena.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I have a slideshow tonight. Mayor, just wait to see it. It's Don Bernat line. Thank you.
Okay, you should hear it. I mean, see it momentarily.
Okay, I can see it.
Great.
It's work, by the way. Okay.
Yep, just go.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Chow, city council members, Deputy Shee, Brian, and Deputy City Manager and City Staff. Thank you for allowing me to present tonight. I'd like to supplement the excellent written and oral comments and concerns from my fellow Garden Gate neighbors with photos this time to illustrate why Mary Ave is an unsupple site for the Villa's housing projects. Next slide please. Over one. Next slide please. Thank you. Over 350 residents from the impacted area shown in this circle has signed a petition opposing this project due to significant negative impacts with how on community safety, traffic, and overall quality of life. Next slide. I urge the city council to recognize the overwhelming voice for this busy street that is really a bustin' artery for the region. It serves as a main route for school and county traffic. It's a key recreational path. Next slide please. It's a main route for school traffic and the truck route for the Cupertino Public Works Service Center that Jill had mentioned. Next slide. Mary Ave also serves a diverse set of uses from cyclists, pedestrians, jitters, young children that all utilize the bike paths to Don Burnett Ridge. Next slide. On a daily basis, multimodal transportation route for fully utilized. This is taken during rush hour outside the Bloodbore Apartments. Next slide. Homestead High School track and field students also train along Mary Avenue every day. Next slide. The plan has flaws too. It poses significant pedestrian and bike safety hazards. It has sore ingress and egress. Looking at the figure to the right, the parking driveways that Brian mentioned are placed directly opposite Glenbrook's two-way driveway. It does not make sense. There's no learning zone to amp on trucks or service vehicles that are likely for, to appear for ADD populations. There is no bypass lane, and with narrowing, that's going to pose safety issues. And there's going to be more of a jaywalking problem when you put parallel parking only on one side up there, Mary Ave between two high-density housing units. Next slide. The narrow growths and lack of bypass lane will pose safety hazards for emergency vehicles as well. Next slide. Mary Ave is the main route out to Stevens Creek Boulevard and I-85 for over 1,000 Garden Gate residents. And that's a correction to Ren Jan's quote of only a few hundred. It's actually over 1,000. Below is shown, below you see Greenleaf Way.
Thank you, Lena. That is your time.
Thank you.
And... And... Next, we have Connie Cunningham, followed by Sam R. Welcome, Connie.
Good evening, Mayor Chow, Vice Mayor Moore, council members, and City Manager. My name is Connie Cunningham. I'm a 38-year resident and currently Chair of the Housing Commission, speaking for myself only. I am speaking tonight to thank the city council for its vote on July 15, 2025, to move this project forward after the study session. I was excited to see that vote. I am supportive of the application to develop new extremely low-income homes for intellectually developmentally disabled individuals and also other below-market rate housing units on city-owned property along Mary Avenue. This is much-needed housing that has been on the council's work program for many years. I remember 2019, when former Mayor Scharf made it a priority, and I was new to the Housing Commission. I have attended the Housing Commission and city council meetings for this project. I have also attended the Housing Element meetings, at which this site was identified for this purpose. It is hard to find land in Cupertino. I applaud the council and the city planners for their working hard to find this very special place. Many families and individuals will be helped with this housing. It will also facilitate the city's goal to keep individuals from falling into homelessness. Many individuals who are intellectually developmentally disabled live with aging parents. Therefore, these apartments will help these individuals, their aging parents, and our community. It was good to see that the issue of parking was discussed at the study session and that the plans for Mary Avenue have been published so the details can be more fully understood by the community. When this project comes forward for signature, I urge you to vote yes. Thank you for this chance to speak tonight.
Thank you, Connie. Next, we have Sam R. Welcome, Sam.
Good evening, Mayor Chow and council members. I would like to firstly thank Mayor Chow and Councilmember Wong for making time to meet with the residents of the Garden Gate neighborhood. And I would welcome the remaining three council members to please make time to meet likewise with the Garden Gate neighborhood. What we learned from the 2024 election was that elections are won and lost based on what happens between elections, based on what votes are cast, and based on council members listening to residents. We learned that from neighborhoods that voted against incumbents living in their own neighborhoods. And I think we have more of that coming in 2026, as you clearly saw from the Garden Gate neighborhood. The council members that are up for reelection in November 2026 hopefully are paying attention to this because Garden Gate neighborhood knows and understands who is voting in support of them and who is voting against them. I would like to reiterate my comments that I made at the previous council meeting on a number of questions that I've since sent in as written comments that I have not seen a response back on. Mayor Chow, I urge you to please have those comments tabled for a study session. These are worthy of the city's time to deliberate and understand the legal implications and the financial implications and obligations to the city. Specifically, I urge you to research the implications to the city from inverse condemnation claims that may be potentially filed against the city by any of those that spoke today, including Glenbrook. And I want to thank Brian Avery from Glenbrook for speaking today because for far too often, our city has ignored our commercial property owners in these manners. Not only are our residents ignored, but our commercial property owners are ignored. And Glenbrook is a fantastic location for affordable housing. It's a place that I wanted to move into 20 years ago. It's a place I would move into again if I had to. And we have ignored the needs of Glenbrook, whether it be the sounds of pickleball coming from the adjacent courts or whether it be the impact from taking away street access and putting in housing there. So please research inverse condemnation claims. There is a number of, there are a number of cases that give you precedent for what happens when public access is impacted and what property owner claims have occurred and how those were ruled against. I've raised a number of questions on financial obligations. You have an obligation to understand whether this will be a recurring cost to the city beyond the PMR funds that have been allocated one time. We have already seen the cost to the county from its attempt to do good socially. Please look into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. That is your time. And Mayor, that concludes the speakers for this item.
Mayor, apologies. I was wondering if we could take a bio break, so...
Okay.
Mayor, if I could just make one quick comment, that I've also met with the neighbors in the Garden Gate community on the Mary Avenue Villas.
Oh, okay, yeah. So, thank you. And, okay. So we are allowed some brief comments or any refer to the staff. If anyone would like to make that. Okay, then would that take how much time?
10 minutes if I can.
10 minutes? We'll come back at 8 o'clock?